Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pintop Lakeside Town Council's order and welcome you all here. I appreciate you sticking with us with our little technological delay. Before we get started, I would just like to reassure everybody, I'm getting a lot of phone calls about the smoke in the air. There's a fire on the San Carlos, the Bronco Fire, I believe it is, and the wind has shifted our direction. So it is not, we're not in immediate danger at all, but it is something that we probably all need to be aware of. It's still a little bit scary right now. We have a unique situation tonight with three of our council members online, so I'm going to do a roll call, just so that everybody knows that they're there. So councillor Phillips? Can you unmute and say you're here, please? Councillor Heisler?
I am present.
Vice Mayor?
I am present.
Councillor Phillips, are you there? We may have lost him. Okay, councillor Frenow is out of town, and we do, so we do have a quorum. Please make sure you're...
There he is.
There he is, okay. Thank you councillor Phillips. We do have a quorum. I'd ask you to make sure that your cellphones are silenced, and stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the equality for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tony?
Would you all please bow your heads? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather as a community this evening to consider matters of importance to our town. We ask your blessing on the members of our town council, our staff, and members of our community gathered here tonight. During this time of transition in our town, we pray that you grant us the strength to work together toward common goals that will make our community one in which we can all grow and prosper. We ask your special blessing on our law enforcement personnel and first responders who work tirelessly to keep us safe every day. And with the new school year upon us, we pray for the children of our community that they may have a safe and prosperous year. We also ask you to bless our educators for their commitment to guiding the young people who will someday become our future leaders. We pray for these things and give you thanks and glory in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Tony. Item B on our agenda tonight is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the town of Pintop Lakeside. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in call to the public is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter and put on a future agenda. Items on the agenda are not heard during call to the public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. First of all, I'm going to call up Debbie Neff with the Humane Society, and Mark Sterling to give us an update on where the Humane Society is. So please come on up Debbie. Thanks for coming. And Mark? You guys can speak for as long as you need to.
Thank you council for having us this evening. As you mentioned, my name's Debbie Neff. I am the executive director for the Humane Society of the White Mountains. I just recently took that position in April, and I've been with the company for the last 18 years. So I just kind of wanted to touch base on the number of animals that we have taken in, and then I broke it down by the number of animals that we have taken in by the city of Pintop Lakeside. So year to date, we have taken in 244 animals. The number of animals we've taken in through Pintop Lakeside, either through citizens or the police department animal control through June is 67. And then year to date, the number of animals we've taken in through the police department animal control is 83. So we've done really well with, you know, having citizens and animal control bring in those animals in, and being able to get them adopted. I also wanted to thank the town of Pintop Lakeside for their support over the last 20 years for our annual Happy Tales fundraiser auction barbecue. Not only with, you know, helping us throughout the fundraiser, but allowing us to put our banners up and different things like that, and all the help that you've provided us with loaning us different tables and everything. So I really appreciate that. And Happy Tales this year is on August 23rd, and it's from 10 to 4 at the Orchard and Charlie Clark's, if anybody wants to come. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you for being here. I just kind of want a clarification. You had 67 animals from Pintop Lakeside, and then year to date 83?
67 through the end of June, our second quarter.
Okay.
And then 83 year to date.
Okay, so you brought it. Okay, thank you. That makes more sense. I appreciate that. Okay, any other questions for Debbie? Council members? Anybody on the phone? Okay, we'll see you all at Happy Tales.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you guys being here. This time I would like to call, oh, I'm sorry, Larry, you're on. Kenny Cale.
Hi, Mayor Owen, council members and town staff. I would like to request that the mayor or a council member recognize the desire of the community to develop a dog park. We could take action by developing a committee of key stakeholders to revisit possible options that would include purpose, structures, maintenance, expenses, outside funding sources, and location of said dog park. Please realize, this is a common service between Winslow, Payson, Holbrook, Snowflake, Loeb, Sholo, Round Valley, Pintop, and even gas stops located on I-40. There's only one town that doesn't have a dog park. I would point out that these towns don't recognize the possibilities of increased tourism. We, as a town, could take advantage of this tourism niche by promoting Pintop Lakeside as the dog vacation destination for the state of Arizona. It has been recommended that I run a petition drive to show interest in the park. The council already paid for a survey that has given them this information. It's been recommended that I try to develop funding sources without the backing of the town council, which I believe would lessen the chances of finding a donor dramatically. I understand why the council voted down the excessive expense of the last dog park proposal, but believe we should deal with realistic costs. I know there are problems with dog parks that need to be addressed and mitigated, but I believe with proper planning, we can provide a much-needed community service. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Kenny. We appreciate your passion on this topic. I don't have any other requests to speak during call to the public, so we'll move on then to our consent agenda, item D. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of town council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. We have three items on our consent agenda tonight. One of them is for a new business in our community, a liquor license. So before we vote on these, I would like to invite you to come up and introduce yourselves and tell us about your business.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Council members, mayor, and then town manager. My name is Ray. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Reddy Sanjaya. I'm actually the owner of the Niko Asian Fusion. So this is my co-owner and my wife, Brian, and then Tasia Sanjaya. So as, yeah, I know, like, we're about to be like a new business in town. So we're going to have like a bachi sushi and ramen, pretty much, with the liquor license supported, basically. So we're going to be the only one in town who serve like a Japanese beer, actually, on draft. Whoever likes beer, basically. Yeah.
Okay. And when do you expect to open?
We're trying to open up on the 14th next week, actually.
Very good. Very good. Well, welcome to our community. We wish you every success.
Thank you so much.
And we appreciate you being part of our community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
I have a question. Is there any Kirin?
Orin?
Is there any Kirin?
Sir, yes. We're going to have Kirin, Sapporo, Asahi, on draft, actually. Yep, you're welcome, sir. Seems like you like the Kirin, though. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Anybody on Zoom have a question? Okay, well, thank you.
Where's our location?
Where are you located?
We're located on 674 East Mountain Boulevard Suite 7, which is on the same plaza with the US Post Office.
Pintop Post Office.
Yep, Pintop Post Office, yes.
Yes, Kristi, what we've...
I just wanted to remind them that if council approves this tonight, I'll send this to the Arizona Department of Liquor tomorrow. But it takes them a little bit of time to get that to be approved.
To get that approved.
So even if you open, it may not be effective the day you open. So stay in contact with the Arizona Department of Liquor.
Right. I have another question also. Like, I actually already have the interim permit.
Perfect.
Yep, so...
Then you should be good.
Should be good, right? Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you for having us.
Yes, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Councillor Smith?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. If a motion is second, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Councillor Phillips?
Aye.
Councillor Heisler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Arigato.
Okay, we'll move on then to item D, which is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item, either before or after council discussion. Questions from the council, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 tonight is the town of Pintop Lakeside proclamation of Child Support Awareness Month. Whereas the town of Pintop Lakeside joins the nation in recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month, and reforms its commitment to strengthening Arizona's families by providing child support services to improve the economic stability and well-being of children. And whereas the state of Arizona will always be committed advocates for our children, whose safety and security remains top of mind. And whereas a child who receives emotional and financial support is more likely to feel safe and secure, and are better equipped with the courage to be their very best in life. And whereas the Department of Economic Security, Division of Child Support Services, the DCSS, is robustly committed to putting Arizona's children first, and to humbly serving Arizonans with excellence, respect, integrity, and kindness, as well as being an overall champion for economic growth and opportunity. And whereas DCSS strongly advocates for parenting responsibilities because parents and children benefit when both parents are engaged with their child at every stage, regardless of marital status. And whereas strengthening individuals and families with an emphasis on fiscal responsibility promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunities for families to be able to enhance their children's future. And whereas Child Support Awareness Month salutes diligent parents who spend time with their child, and who make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Erwin, mayor of the town of Pintop Lakeside, do hereby proclaim August 2025 as Child Support Awareness Month in the town of Pintop Lakeside. In witness whereof, I have here and do set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the town of Pintop Lakeside, Arizona, done the 7th day of August 2025. Item D2 on our agenda is a presentation from Nav Apache Electric on energy efficiency. Sam, would you like to come up?
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, and thank you council members for this time with you guys today. Nav Apache Electric would like to spend some time to help the community understand energy efficiency and how that can save them quite a bit of money. I've been with Nav Apache Electric for eight years, and I have been doing energy efficiencies, solar, new construction, all these things for the community quite regularly.
Is it working?
No, ma'am.
Okay. If you just want to tell me when to advance the slide, I'll do it for you.
Okay. So I have been with Nav Apache, like I said, for eight years. I'm an energy efficiency expert. I've taken the training for it, basic electricity through the Northwest lineman college, solar 101 and 102, and been through the Steffes ETS heaters training about five times at this point. Go ahead, please.
Oh, sorry.
So what is energy efficiency? Go ahead and click it again for me.
There we go.
Sorry. Energy efficiency is the use of less energy to perform the same task and produce the same result. Energy efficiency is one of the easiest ways for, and most cost-effective ways for residents or a business to be able to save as much money as humanly possible on their energy bills. When you're able to save a bunch of money, it helps you, it helps you with anything that you're after. Whether you're trying to save money, or just trying to reduce your footprint in the community. We do this with insulation, LED lights, installing energy-efficient windows to reduce your energy use and improve the comfort of your location. So, energy efficient house, what is that? An energy efficient home minimizes consumption while providing comfort and performance, and it does that three ways. This evening we want to talk about is insulation, windows, and LED lighting.
Next one.
It saves energy, it reduces your carbon footprint, and ultimately, it'll save money. One more.
One more?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
If I didn't realize you were doing that, I wouldn't have made this.
I didn't realize it was her.
All right, one more, please.
Okay.
First thing I want to talk about is insulation. R-value, what is that? What that is, is that's the performance of resistance to air transferring through the walls. You find this in windows, you find it in walls, you find it in ceilings, it's everywhere. There's a couple of different ways that you can really improve your R-value in your home. These are more expensive, however, they are a very viable option for a lot of people. The first one is spray foam. It's going to be the most effective. Unfortunately, it is the most expensive as well. This usually goes hand in hand. They have a very high R-value, and the higher the R-value, the better it will perform. Their 3.6 to 7.1 inches will give you an R-value of 3.6 to 7.1 per inch, I'm sorry. When you're talking about fiberglass, which is the most common that you will find in a home, people will see it, it's yellow or pink. Typically, that's between 2.9 and 3.8 per inch, and it's much more inexpensive. It's very cost-effective, but it's just not a very good performance item. On the last one is blown insulation. Typically, you find this in your ceiling. For every inch, you get 3.2 to 4 inches, or 4 R-value per inch. It's very inexpensive, it's easy to install. However, it does retain moisture, and it's very heavy, so that's why you typically find it in the ceiling, so that it can bear the weight. Your windows, you have several different material that you can use. Insulated vinyl, fiberglass, and wood and aluminum. Your vinyl is going to be your most affordable. It also gives you the highest energy efficiency, very low maintenance. Fiberglass is very expensive, but it's also very low maintenance. You don't have to mess with it pretty much ever. Wood, it's going to be very high maintenance, very low performance, but it sure looks purty. The aluminum is going to be your shortest lifespan, and it's also going to be the least energy efficient that you can get, but is a very, very, very economical option. When we're talking about glass, you want to look at single, double, triple, or gas filled. Single is obviously the least. You want to do at least a double pane so that you can help prevent the transference of air. Triple pane is basically the Cadillac of windows. It's going to be able to do some UV protection, and also preventing a kind of airflow. If you can get the gas filled, that's even better, because all it does is just prevent more transference. Weather stripping, something that simple, actually works quite well. You see it around your doors and around your windows. It prevents any kind of air leakage, because cold air coming into the home is going to beat hot air every time, and the cold air is what you're going to feel. And also, it eliminates any kind of drafts in the home, so that you don't have to run around in a blanket. LED lights. Lighting accounts for around 15% of a home's electricity usage. It doesn't seem like much, but the average bill, I'm guessing, is around $100. That's a lot of money for some lights. The nice thing about that is, is that you can change those lights out. Residential LEDs, they are quite effective. They're 75% less energy, and they're about 30 times longer lasting than your standard incandescent bulb that most people purchase. The nice thing about that is, is that LED conversion, you don't need as much light as you had. So a 60-watt bulb typically is going to be 7 to 10 watts, so you're able to save quite a bit of money. And because LEDs do not produce a lot of heat, you're more comfortable in your home as well. You don't have to worry about the kids or the dogs knocking it over and creating a problem, because they're nice and cool. LEDs also are very directed. They're not just spatial everywhere, so you're able to direct the light where you want it to go. And, believe it or not, the color variations create atmosphere. Businesses use different colors on lights, and that's why you can buy different colors, because it creates different moods for everybody, and it's quite an interesting read if you ever have a chance. Best part about LED lights, come see us at Nav Apache. Every year, we'll give you a box of eight 60-watt LED light bulbs, just because you're part of our membership. So, we have some resources that we do at Nav Apache to help our members. We'll do in-home energy audits. We'll schedule the time, we'll come out there, we have a FLIR camera. We'll spend some time with you, talk about the do's and don'ts, and how you can save money, and the good ways to do that, that it's at no charge to our membership. We have 101 Easy Ways. It's a pamphlet that we have that we can pass out to help anybody that wants to do it yourself, or if they want more of a, it kind of gives you do it yourself all the way up to hiring somebody to get stuff done. We have the ETS heater assessments. ETS heaters are a product that we sell that have bricks inside of them that work with our on-peak and off-peak. They're 100% efficient, and they will heat the home quite well for a very economical price. The nice thing about them is, is we don't really jack the price up on them. It's, we try to take care of our membership and get them to them at cost as close to. And then we do solar savvy assessments. We come talk to you, or you can come talk to us. We'll figure out what size solar system that your home could have. We'll talk about what it'll do for you, how we will interface with you, how our partnership would look like, and things like that. And we'll even help you go through the contract to make sure you understand exactly what you're getting Currently, we have a couple of programs. Water heater timer rebate. Anybody that puts in a brand-new water heater timer will give you a $50 credit on your bill with proof of purchase. Residential LED, like I said, we are giving them away. Commercial light rebate will give you nine cents per watt that you change from an incandescent to an LED. And there's a max of $500, I believe, on that. ETS heaters, like I said, help utilizing the time of use and being able to heat your home at an economical price. We have a kilowatt. It's an item that you plug into any standard home receptacle. You can plug an item into it, and it'll tell you just how many watts that thing is actually using, so that you can get an idea, real-time idea of what that cost is going to look like. It works great on space heaters, because people don't realize how much space heaters actually cost. We have our time of use program, on-peak and off-peak, 15.6 cents on the on-peak, however, five and a half cents for the off-peak, and 64% of the day is off-peak. A lot of the ones in the valley, you don't get that kind of timeline, so we give you quite a bit. And then we have all of our distributed generation buyback programs as well. Any questions this evening?
Thank you. That was great. Great information. Any questions from the council that are here? Any of you online have questions? Okay, well, thank you, Sam. We appreciate you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Anybody that needs me, I'm in the Lakeside office. Please come see me whenever.
Okay. We appreciate the, all the partnership that we have with Nav Apache, too.
Oh, yeah.
We always work well together, so we appreciate you guys.
We appreciate you, too.
Anyway, okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to item D3, which is a public hearing discussion and possible legal action to approve resolution number 25-1785, adopting the final budget for the town of Pintop Lakeside for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. I'm going to turn this over to our representatives from the James Vincent Group. I don't know if it's going to be Gabe, or Sarah, or how we're going to do this, but I'll turn it over to you guys for now.
All right, perfect. Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council, just want to first introduce myself. I know the last meeting you had, Sarah presenting, she will present as well today. I'm Gabe Boldra. I'm one of the partners at James Vincent Group. We've been working very diligently over the last couple of weeks on coming forward with kind of a final budget presentation. And in turn, not only have we been working hard, you know, the town staff has been working very hard as well, refining their budgets. A day like today's, you know, there's some news within here that I think everybody knows is coming, but I know there may come as a shock to some people. I think ultimately, though, we have a plan to go forward, and we have the commitment of staff and everyone here to work through the plan. And so I'll turn it over to Sarah. She'll kind of start through on the presentation, and her and I will kind of take some turns as we go through this. I'm sure Rick Miller, town manager, will also have a couple insights to provide as well as we go through this.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, member of council. Tonight, we will go through our budget presentation here. We'll first walk through what has changed since the last time that we presented. We'll go through the budget overview, and then how did we get here, and then next steps. So looking at what has changed. So we've, as Gabe mentioned, we've done a lot of meetings with each of the department managers, and then we've also done a four-year trend analysis. So let me back up a bit on JBG's kind of process of how we do budgets. So typically, our budget process starts in the January, February timeframe with our look at what the budget requests are from each department. And then we compare that to an annual look of like four years, four- to five-year average of how much we've spent in each one of those categories, to really be able to see, is the project, is the request coming in in line with what we've previously seen in spend. So we've gone through that process over the last three weeks, four weeks here. We did look at a four-year trend analysis, looking at both what, how much we spend in each of those years, looking at an average, looking at compound annual growth over those accounts. And that's at an account-level basis. So we've gone through every single account within the town's financials and looked at it at that level.
One thing I want to add, too, why we kind of looked at the last four years, I don't know if anybody has felt this in their own pocketbook, but we've kind of had record inflation over the last four years. And so, looking previously to that, you know, some of that data, we may show that, you know, our costs were lower, but we also weren't experiencing the inflation that we saw from really '21 through to where we're at today. And so that's why we really kind of focused on that period of time and didn't look back further, because we wouldn't be able to rely so much on that data as what our ongoing expenses were. And one of the big reasons we do this kind of trend analysis is not only to look at what were the budget requests from, from a department head's, you know, analysis on what they... what they need, but we look at it from, from an analytic standpoint on, is it a reasonable request? Is it higher than what we've experienced? Is it lower than what we've experienced? And then we want to understand why, if there wasn't change, why that change was there. And some of the things that Sarah will talk about here in a minute is, as we went through from what you saw last month, what you saw, what you're seeing today, we actually had some increases because we realized, you know, there was, there were some cuts that were maybe a little too deep that would have actually harmed us down the road. And we obviously, you know, there are essential services, essential things that we have to spend money on as a town and we don't want to cut those in an effort to save some budget money today.
So with that, we've also looked at it from a revenue perspective. So we talked a lot about the department side on the expenditures. We also looked at it, line item detail on each revenue account as well within the town's financials and did the same exact analysis, looking at how much we've seen over the last four years and what we can expect to see in this coming year. And with that, we did see some pluses and some minuses to our budget. I've categorized a couple of big ones that we've seen for the department specific here laid out. The first one is in our tourism and promotions. We have a savings of about $125,000. Really, that's related to restructuring, kind of what we're looking at and doing, focusing more on marketing ads versus doing and removing, I believe, one event and then also looking at census counts for that division as well. Our library also saw savings of about $109,000 and that's really related to the reduction in employee census count as well as moving benefit costs. So we were, as we were doing our analysis, we did see that there were some people that were moved into full-time positions that were, I think, 32 hours a week positions. So then therefore they were collecting benefits for health insurance and things like that that added very steep cost to the town. And so moving them back to their 24-hour part-time hours that allowed us to save some money on their benefits as well. Police is one area that I will mention, we did see an increase. It's a small increase, but I did want to bring forward this to the council here. We did see an increase of about $2,000, but there was big shifts going through this. So one thing that we did look at is looking at their expenditures of how much they've spent, again, in that history of that four-year look and then adjusted based off of what we think we need based off of those spends. That was predominantly in training and dues and memberships. However, we did see an increase when we looked at the employee census count. So historically, we've been seeing a larger amount of benefit cost than what we had originally in that budget, proposed budget was allocated for the police benefits. And so we've made an adjustment to be more in line with the historical trends of what we think really will happen. So the net effect of those two things was an increase of $2,000. And then Public Works also saw savings of about $160,000. That was really aligned to the employee census and eliminating open positions or putting on hold those open positions. And then we also, this is another where, area where while we did see a savings, we did have to increase a couple of line items. As we dug into that budget, we looked at a lot of things related to building repair and maintenance costs or fleet repair and maintenance costs. And Director Patterson had done, had done a lot of decline in that, looking at trying to save some money to be able to come forward with the budget. But historically, we just can't see how we're going to get there. So we brought that more in line. There's still savings there. We didn't bring it all the way up, so we do need some work to be done, but just because we need to be able to repair an HVAC unit if that happens, we need to have something in that budget to be able to make that.
Sarah, I'd like to add, Madam Mayor, for the tourism and promotion budget, that is a restricted fund, you know, the money that funds that is the bed tax. And then closely, you know, looking with, working with Annie and this particular one, she's been evaluating that fund over the last several years and we're seeing it decrease. And so she wanted to make sure, as we looked at these cuts, that she would have enough revenue to cover the, you know, expected, expected revenues to cover the expenses. So she's projecting about a $300,000 revenue. We cut that budget down, so she's still in alignment with providing that service with those expected decreases based on the historic trends. We've had a couple of bad winter seasons. Revenue on the bed tax has been coming down a little bit over recent years, so that, that's really why the reduction there was necessary.
I think here's a good point too to add. This isn't the only cuts that have been done. You know, this is, this is what has been done since what was presented last month. I know in our short time here and meeting with the department heads, working with Rick, that there's been a lot of work done even prior to that. And unfortunately, you're going to see it a little bit, there's still more work to be done, but I want the council and mayor to know that, that staff has done a tremendous amount of work to, to continue to find a way to, you know, essentially right-size our budget so we kind of have our, a strong financial backing as we move forward, so.
So overall, that impact is a savings of $432,000 in the budget for this current year compared to what we presented last, last month. I will mention that overall, the dollar amounts did not change of our expenditures. And the reason for that is really because we've only had a month to look at this. We're coming in, learning all about the town and what the expenditures need to happen and we don't want to ever get us into a position where we become, where we needed to have that money spent and now we can't and we've tied our hands. So what we've done is we've just increased our contingency and so that grew by the 432,000. That's why you're not seeing that expense line going down from what we presented last, last month. Moving on to the next slide, so this is just a look at our expenditures for the 2026 budget. There's a total expenditures of the $41.9 million, as I mentioned. That is flat to what we presented last month, however, with that additional contingency bounced in here. This has now, the total contingency is about $1 million, $1 million of total contingency with that reduction of the 400,000 that we just talked about. This does have funding of 66 FTEs, which is a reduction of four FTEs from our last budget presentation. And then we, but we continue to spend down our fund balance. So that's where we need to go into our next, what our next steps and our next actions are. So before we get in there, we do want to take a look at kind of our revenues and expenditures and how that's been trending. This is looking at, and I apologize, it's a little hard to see on the screens, but it's looking at 2021 actuals through where we project for 2026. And the orange line is the expenditures, while the blue line is the revenue. So you can see here in 2021, we were actually, revenue was over our expenditures, which is good news. That's what we want to see. And then in 2022, we about broke even. It was really close. And then since then though, we have had our expenditures are outpacing our revenue. Where our revenue is only growing about 4% over the last four years, our expenditures are growing about 15%. So now we're in a position where our expenditures are greater than our revenues that we're bringing in.
And that's why we kind of, I mentioned earlier, the inflation. I mean, yes, there are things, decisions that have been made to add things, but it's also just been the cost of doing business has gone up considerably. And with a 4% growth on, on revenue, it, it's just not keeping pace with inflation. So as we move forward and we're going to obviously talk a little bit more about next steps, but one of the things I do want, you know, mayor and council to think about is, unfortunately, we're going to have to come forward with plans of further reductions. And those reductions are going to have to be elimination of, of different services and things that are deemed non-critical and, or we have to change the revenue side. We have to change the structure. There's, there's two, there's two key components to this, you know, the revenue and the expenses. We either need to increase revenues or cut expenses. And as you know, there's only really one place we can go to increase revenues. And so, you know, we're going forward with the, with the assumption that our option is to, to reduce those expenses.
One thing I wanted to note before we move on off this slide is also just that uptick that you see in the 2026 budget numbers compared to what we've historically seen. That's really driven by an increase in our grants and our donations. So that's what's really driving that increase up. This look here is looking at our historical fund balance and so same time periods that we saw on the graph previously, but this is looking at what each one of our fund balances are, is doing each year and where it's kind of ending. So you can see here in 2021, we had just over $4 million worth of fund balance for across all of our funds. And then you can see that big increase in fiscal year 2022. Most of that was in our capital, that orange bar is capital. And that's really related to the debt service that we brought in for the PSPRS refinancing and then also the building for the PD. And then we looked at 2023, we start to see that fund balance come back down and then continuing to come down, as we mentioned in the previous slide, with our expenditures over our revenues. So we continue to see that fund balance coming down. And at this point, our projection for 2026 is quite about a $3 million, excuse, $2 million worth of fund balance across all of our funds with nothing in capital. And so that is a concern and that's why we need to have our next steps come through.
Yeah, and I think right now, and we, we had a meeting with the department heads, you know, head of the council meeting, and while we're putting forward a budget for council approval today, this is by no means where we stop. We need to continue to find areas to eliminate expenses, reduce expenses. Obviously, I'm always for finding alternative revenue sources, but you know, when we look at where our projected fund balance is at the end of 2026 with the adopted budgeted expenses as it stands, we'll have just under two months, two months of expenses in our, in our general fund, which, you know, is, is a, is, I wouldn't even call it a bare minimum. I would, I would call it below the minimum needed, you know, to, to be not only a healthy organization, healthy town, but to operate going forward as well as the fact that we don't have funding for future capital. And one thing we do know is we're always going to have capital needs. And so we really need to not only have our revenue match our expenses, we really need our revenue to exceed our expenses so we can replenish our fund balances, both of the general fund and the capital fund.
So where do we go from here? So again, tonight, we do have that statutory deadline of adopting the 2026 budget. However, with that said, that's just for right now. We continue to want, meet with town manager ourselves and the department managers to refine the expenditures, continue to drill into figuring out what else we can cut to bring this budget more in line and have replenishing back our fund balance as well as building out our capital fund. And so then there's just a couple of lists of JVG recommendations. So obviously, we'll want to evaluate and prioritize our funding for essential services while identifying and reducing or eliminating non-essential or low-impact programs. So that's something that we've already started looking at. We had our meeting today and that's something that we are going to be working through targets to try to figure out where we need to go and then bringing that back to the council to say, here is what we think, where, how much each one of these things costs. And then working as a team effort to figuring out, okay, is that something that we can do from a town perspective? And then we need to address the wage scale issues. We need to reduce other miscellaneous expenditures. And then also we want to be able to identify that, the current capital request as well as build out that 10-year plan. We need to know what we plan on buying so that we can really identify how much do we need in the bank and start building out that fund balance to be able to fund those capital projects in the future and not rely upon one-time money.
So I know we've given a lot of information and I know that there's, there's still a lot of work to be done. I think that the key thing that Sarah mentioned there at the end is, is this is, you know, it's not just JVG, it's not just your, you know, department heads, it's not just your town manager. It's, it's all of us. We all need to come together, identify the areas that we can do to, to make changes, to get the budget balanced from, from a cash perspective. And then also bring forward to council and get, get the input from council on what are those prioritized funding things that we need to keep going. And understand also too, and I think sometimes a lot of people don't understand what the true cost of some of the things we're doing are, and, and bring forward that true cost of some of these programs and determine, is that something that we really need to do right now or is that something we could put on hold for a little bit while we get this back in line, so.
I'd like to add that it's been really amazing working with our department heads on what they're trying to do to minimize the impact to the budget. We've, we've done a lot. We still have a lot to do, as been said. When I first came here, I was amazed at the amount of work that comes out of this organization in providing the services for this community on behalf of the citizens in light of the revenues that the town receives. I mean, it's nothing short of a miracle, actually, when you think about it. I don't think we're any different than a lot of other small communities. Fortunately for you, mayor and, and the council and others who participated recently in some legislative moves that prevented the town from losing a very sizable revenue source in the, in the food tax, I don't know what that would have done to us had that not, had that passed. So we still are at the mercy of even the legislature and what they do and, and the impact of their decisions on small communities like ours. But we'll continue to look at this on a regular basis with our department heads, with our fiscal officer here, Gabe and Sarah, to continue to find ways to, to bring this down. I can assure you that we can't go on the pace that we're going right now. We have to find ways to, to cut or to build the, build the revenues. It may be a combination of both, but we'll know more as time goes. I would encourage people to shop locally because that's where a big chunk of our money comes from, the sales tax. Unfortunately, you know, this community provides services to, I would say probably double the population that actually live and call this home. We provide services to double the population with limited revenue. And so that, that's a pretty challenging order. Our departments are all working very hard. I don't think that you could look, go into any one of them that I've seen and I've seen them all. They're working very hard and they're at the, really at the top of what they can do right now. I mean, they're struggling to keep up, just to let you know. Appreciate their efforts and the efforts of, of this team that we brought on board here because generally this process is a three to four month process and they've only been on board here for a short period of time. So nothing short of a miracle of what they've been able to do and what they've been able to advise us on to bring us back into some better fiscal condition.
Thank you. Council members, questions, comments, anything you want to add? Councilor Turner?
I sat where you guys are sitting with a $30 million budget and was asked to take large cuts when we weren't selling cars and trucks. And those conversations were painful. The process was painful and stressful. I wasn't part of your meetings, but I know what you went through. It's very difficult and I think we're going to be getting to a point where we're going to have some more difficult decisions to make and we're going to have to look ourselves in the mirror and, and make those decisions for this town. One thing I'd like to ask, is it possible to get a monthly report to the council?
Yes, so Madam Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that's definitely so. One of the things that we're going to start at the September board meeting is, one, we're going to get the council caught up on the financials and then we're going to start doing a monthly financial presentation.
Excellent.
Which will include kind of an overview, obviously, of our revenue and expenses and also more importantly, looking at that fund balance on a monthly basis. And one of the things, the financial reports we prepare for our clients also includes, we kind of always say, if you look at anything, look at the first page and the last page. First page is kind of the summary of the financials. The last page is a 12-month rolling cash flow. And you'll be able to see the work that's going to be done through the next 12 months or I guess 11 months now on improving that, that end of the, end of the year cash position, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Smith?
Well, that was a monumental task for the last few months. We, I know how much, I think I know how much work went into it, which was a lot and I, I really appreciate all the staff and Rick for stepping, stepping up in a difficult situation. And I think we're, we've, we've got the best that we're going to get right now and thank you.
So I would like to hit on a couple of points. One of your recommendations is that we're evaluating our current capital requests. I do know that we have no new capital requests in, in our budget, so, so we have looked at that and we do have some items that are going to be paid off in this, this current fiscal year, so that will help a little bit with our cash flow. It's not enough to make up the difference, but it will be a significant help. The other thing I would like to, to touch on is, is what Rick commented on. We serve, our incorporated boundaries are about 4,100 people, but that's really not the total people that we serve. And a lot of those people that... And a lot of those people that come here and have a second home, it would help our community if you would consider this your first home. And I know that there are a lot of reasons why people don't, don't move their permanent residence to Pine Top Lakeside, and we won't go into all those possible reasons, but if, if more people consider this their permanent residence, that would help us with our state's shared revenues and our funding through the state. So that would be something that I would ask of our citizens, that you consider where you are a permanent resident and a full-time resident. And we are also, I think one of the things that we've missed, and Gabe briefly touched on it, is the increasing our revenues, increasing our, our economy up here. And we've got a few things that are, you know, out there on the fringes, that hopefully we can get across the finish line, that would help, too, because it's going to take a combination of increasing our revenues and decreasing our expenses. So at this time, I would like to open it up to any of our council members online. Counselor Phillips, do you have anything to add? Is he still with us, can we tell?
Annie, I'm working on.
Counselor Heisler, do you have anything to add?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm here. I just wanted to thank Rick for all the hard work he's done, and I want to thank all the directors. I know it's been really tough going through those budgets, and trying to, you know, cut where we really don't have room to cut, but it's, it's a necessary evil, it's got to be done. We need to get the town back in good fiscal shape, and I appreciate all the hard work of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Phillips. Counselor Heisler, did you have anything to add?
In the interest of being on the phone, I just want to thank staff, and thanks JVG, and thank the other council members for working through this process, and I, I look forward to continuing to work through the things that we need to.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, let me, I, I don't have much to add, but I too, I appreciate JVG, but what they've done, and especially appreciation to our staff, our town staff, for all they've done, and the great effort that's been put forward there, so thank you, all of you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing tonight. I do have one citizen who would like to speak on this topic, Larry McCormick, if you would come up, please.
Good evening, Larry McCormick. I live in the county Pine Top Lakes. I feel like a man on an island, more or less, right now, because you're trying to make cuts, and I'm going to ask you to find some money, money to fund the not-for-profits, specifically the seniors, the community center. It's a gathering place, amongst other things. It feeds people that maybe don't know where their next meal's coming from, it's a place to get together, for me, with friends, and play cards, it's a gathering place for ladies to get together and talk about the world's problems. So, anyway, they're not asking for much money. On a $42 million budget, we asked for $8,000, a small amount compared to the budget. Excuse me for a moment. By the way, I've seen a lot of good things that happened at the budget meeting. It's not often I get to come up and say good things, but there was a lot of money. I felt like Donna Schur, one of myself, were the only ones that read, re-reviewed the check register every month, and now other people do, obviously. There were things on the check register that bothered us, we talked about it, and now something's happening. So, again, I've talked about this before, and, you know, it's something that people will remember in the upcoming election, what we do and what we don't do. And quite honestly, if we can't fund the not-for-profits, I'm going to make sure people remember. So not a threat, but that's the way the system works, and in my estimation. So I would really like you to consider spending a few shekels, and, and it's just not the seniors center, there's meals on wheels, you know the rest of them better than I do. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. As I've said before, we are not insensitive at all to those needs in our community, and I think as a council and staff, we all individually and collectively do our best to support those. These are tough decisions, and so thank you for bringing that to us, I do appreciate that very much.
Mayor, I think it's also important to note, Larry mentioned that there's a $42 million budget, a big part of that is the, the grants and donations that make that seem a lot higher than it really is, so we don't have that much in, in our budget for operations.
Yes. Sarah, is it possible for you to tell us how much we have in the grants?
So in the grants, we have about 14, 15 million, and then the donations of the 12.5, so that's a very large chunk of the $42 million budget.
And, and just so that everybody is aware, when you budget for grants, you budget for a blue sky. Your, your, all your hopes and dreams are out there, that you're applying for these grants. The reality is, we will probably get a very small percentage of that, but we have to budget for it. So what was that, a total of about 26 million, 27 million? So if we bring it down, it's, it's a little bit more in line with what, what is realistic. Unfortunately, we don't necessarily get all that, but we have to put it in the budget just to provide for that. So are there any other citizens who wishes, wish to speak on the budget tonight? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, then. Any further comments from the council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Counselor Smith?
I move to approve Resolution Number 25-1785, adopting the final budget for the town of Pine Top Lakeside for fiscal year 2025-26.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Counselor Heisler?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Thank you, that carries unanimously. I would like to thank our staff for putting all this together tonight with the technology. It's a bit of a challenge, it doesn't happen very often that we have three council members on Zoom, and actually, one council member out of the country, so thank you guys very much for all your hard work. Gabe and Sarah, thank you, we look forward to continuing this effort. And that concludes our business tonight, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.